Okay, good morning. It's eight o'clock. We're gonna get started. I'd like to call this meeting to order with full call. Rebecca? Fran? Here. Marie? Dionne? I don't know if he wants me to share, but Dionne's in the emergency room at Kaiser right now with chest pains. So, yeah, so we're sending him good thoughts. Matt?
Here.
Frank is at a conference. Jane?
Here.
Susan? David? Savannah?
Here.
I'm here. Emily? Jeannie?
Here.
I'm sorry. You can see you sneaked in. Okay. Fred?
Here.
Okay. So anyway, I'd like to introduce our two brand-new members, Jane Howard and Susan Jacobson. Right? So for the next couple of months, you guys get to kind of sit back and just relax. In January, we hit the road running again with some new projects. Public comment? Any public comment? No? Seeing none, we'll move on. Approval of the October minutes. Did all of you have a chance to go online and read them, look at them? I looked at them. I didn't see anything out of order. Do I have someone willing to make a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's go ahead and begin. Did all of you get a chance to look at the four subcommittees that have already reported? You know, the, I guess I should finish the sentence. Did, I think Dionne's announcement just kind of let me a little shook up this morning. The four subcommittees all sent you their reports for a final approval. And when the committee gives the final approval on it, then we will be going to Jimmy to ask when we can be on the council. Tony, come on up and join us. You are a member of the committee. I skipped over you when I did the roll. All right. Yes, no? Was that a yes, no? Okay, plywood removal. Did all of you look at plywood removal?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Is there anything that you see that you would like to question? You know, I know we've gone over all of these before, but is there anything before we move on to a council meeting? Anything else? It's okay to go?
Mm-hmm.
Thumbs up, everyone? Okay. All right. David?
You're out of the committee?
Yeah. Okay. All right. Then Jimmy? When can we get on a council meeting to make a report? Now, this is where I'm a little unclear on how we're gonna handle this. If we're making a report, and then does staff take this and, because you know the window display is already in our ordinance, do they just add the fee to it that we've included in this plywood ordinance? How is this gonna work?
I think the best way to do it is to do a red-line version of the committee's edits.
Okay.
And then we can take that, we're booked the rest of this year, but we could do it probably in January.
January? Okay. And then when the committee gives the, do you want the committee giving the report?
Yeah.
Okay. So we would give it, and then we would just give it as-is?
Yeah.
And then have council discussion?
And council can have direction to staff then to return for introduction of the ordinance. I believe you're changing the ordinance, right?
Right. We're adding to it, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, we can do that. And then for this, for the citation, our committee wants it attached to the property tax bill if they don't pay it.
Yeah.
Or wait it. If they pay it, then it doesn't have to be attached. If they don't pay it, then that would, then it would be attached. How does that work?
You need a property lien.
A property lien? Okay.
It's like, you don't have garbage, the council are here with garbage liens. If they don't pay their garbage bills, it goes on the property tax bill. It's an exit process.
And then, does that have to go on the ballot measure? No. Suppose we want to go on the ballot measure though, and make that part of their property tax bill?
Well, I wouldn't go to the ballot if you don't have to.
Oh, okay.
And if you don't have to?
All right.
Nobody's gonna vote for it.
Yeah.
I just don't, yeah, yes. I just don't want to see some of the property owners just say, fine, I'm not gonna pay it, big deal, have a lien.
As they did before.
That's what they did before.
Anyway, I mean, there's lots of things you can do.
Because I really want the public and the council to understand what we're doing with plywood removal is, we really want to make sure our downtown looks good and clean and presentable. And if we have building, I don't want building owners that are just gonna shine it off and say, big deal. You know, maybe we need to then publicly humiliate. Through a newspaper article, through whatever. I know. If that even matters. Yeah, Sue?
I know I'm new on the committee. I don't want to be a thorn in the bud.
No, 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 please.
But I was rethinking item E, decorative artwork will be tastefully in a matter that represents Gilroy. Isn't that kind of in the eyes of the beholder, what's tasteful? I know you don't want to go into big explanation of what you can and can't do, but...
Oh, I see. That actually came from the existing ordinance.
But that isn't a big deal.
That's true.
I mean, it's still kind of weak.
What they're saying represents Gilroy is that, I mean, we can put more detail in our, like...
Well, I just, what's tasteful to me isn't tasteful to Dave.
I seem to say.
But I think the key word is represents Gilroy.
Yeah.
That there was something that was more Gilroy-focused, if it was any historical or garlic theme or something, I think was the part of also the comment. But we could put more detail into it.
Yeah. What, I know you don't want to go into a lot of detail probably, but I get that, Jeannie, and that's a good, a good point. So it has to be something Gilroy.
Something not offensive, maybe we should put not, that's tasteful, not offensive or crude, maybe we need to put.
Well, maybe we don't. I don't know.
Well, I think one of the things too, you know, that also represents the diversity of Gilroy as well, right?
Right. Help us out with the wording, because I think we're all on the same track here. How would you, artwork representing Gilroy?
Or maybe we should just say artwork that's tasteful and not disrespectful or crude. So I mean, community.
Pretty subjective.
Means community standards, but then that would be a question too.
Let's, let's, sorry. Finish up. Can you, hold on.
I can't hear.
Yeah.
So that's actually legally upheld, what is community standards used a lot to determine, you know, cases where things are, is tasteful. That's what the community determines is tasteful.
Well, again, I would...
We're stuck on a word here.
What if we do decorative artwork that represents Gilroy in a tasteful manner? Because that reinforces...
Well, but no, we should go back to the same.
I don't know, but where you put the word, it's gotta represent Gilroy.
Or a fine approval.
Right.
Or maybe...
I'd rather not be so specific as to Gilroy, but because then if someone puts, like, right now we have one that's the Day of the Dead that's down there, you know, especially during Halloween. It's not disrespectful, you know, and everybody's perception of what it's gonna be.
But you already have that represents Gilroy.
Right.
Already you.
But what I'm saying is, does the Day of the Dead represent Gilroy? You know what I'm saying? But it's...
Seasonally, yes.
Correct.
But again...
Well, what about decorative artwork will be tasteful?
Tasteful is really subjective. I think that's where you're gonna get yourself in hot water.
Yeah.
So usually when you have mural guidelines for cities, there's, you kind of like either have a committee, and they have, they have guidelines that define what the committee or the city or whoever thinks is tasteful. Because you just don't want to use tasteful because like what you think is tasteful, maybe I...
And then we also have on file examples. There was supposed to be where they can, what we had, that was to be on file, that they would check, that there's photos of painted, you know, like Dave with the bull, some of the windows that they could look at.
Well, I'm gonna reiterate what I said, because last time we kind of had a larger discussion in the council, because diversity, in some people's eyes, diversity wasn't represented.
So maybe we should use the word...
I would say, again, whatever that consists of, obviously, but if we have that in variety, that is one of our goals.
Maybe we should put not tasteful and not being disrespect, you know, have tasteful, diverse, you know, diversification.
Yeah.
And nothing that is crude or...
Is it possible to come up to maybe research some guidelines that other places use?
We did.
We did, yes. They never, they...
And no one else.
And it wasn't all, you weren't...
They never, they didn't even put it in.
Yeah, none of them said it.
Well, we could, we could take it out. But then, does that open up a can of worms?
No, I wouldn't take it out.
No.
Maybe I shouldn't have said anything and just...
No, 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 no.
No, no.
This is the purpose right now.
We want to be devil's advocate, because other people are gonna punch holes in it, you know, themselves. Why can't we just put...
Well, what about the fact that you said maybe a subcommittee or something approves of it?
Mm-hmm.
And it could go before the group? And what happens to diversity and...
My only fear is that, how long it would take for the committee to actually approve it, and then by the time the building owner gets it back to paint it, and then, you know, they're already into our, their 90 days. Because we have, well, we have stipulations of how long...
Right, right.
They can leave the plywood up without doing anything.
But as long as... Arts and Culture Commission, which begs the question that it's supposed to be defined as the Arts and Culture Commission.
Right.
So that they're possibly...
But they don't meet, meet...
Why don't we just put that it's respectful and tasteful for the community, and then, I know we had had that there was examples that could show that. Because we talked about that importantly.
I just think you guys are gonna get your, like, I think what Tony's saying is, the Arts and Culture Commission, that's literally their job is, and if you, I know they meet once a month, but, I mean, if you have people who, you know, in the guidelines, they submit to the Arts and Culture and be like, this is when they meet, and this is when you'll have approval.
Right. And then it comes to council after that.
And that's what they do.
Right. But you have to remember, this is only gonna be up for 90 days.
Oh, I know.
Well, then they should...
It's supposed to be...
Then they should plan accordingly.
Right.
I mean, that's, I'm sure that in your experience, David, you could have planned, you know, you would have planned to get it in there and then get your plywood up and just make sure your, your windows and your things come in accordingly. So...
So some of those things, and that's what we had in here is beyond your control, where they come to us and say, it's gonna be longer than 90 days because the shipper didn't ship my windows.
Right.
And that was where we were, we just wanted to be kept in blue.
And the Arts and Culture Commission, I mean, if they're, I know, I know several of them have done murals, and so they might have a bit more knowledge and experience on what other places to use, and they can always reach out to...
Yeah.
Well, maybe the thing you would have to change, the role in charge of the Arts and Culture, because their role is only to review and approve all of art for public spaces.
Right.
They're giving them a lot more power.
There's just a suggestion that they go to the Art and Culture for ideas.
I think we're overthinking this. You know, I really do. I think if you got a muralist to come in and just paint something, I mean, David came up with something immediately. You know, for his, he had Cheryl do it. We're overthinking this project that's gonna be for 90 days, up and down. You, it'll never get done.
I'm just worried about people pushing it, pushing the ordinance away because of the language. I could see that.
Well, then at that point, they come back to the council, and then we address it. Let's, let's see who complains. Chances are, I think, we overthink sometimes these things. These are all really great suggestions, but I don't really see a big problem. You know, they could come and paint beautiful flowers, you know, on it, whatever they, and maybe we do want to get rid of that represents Gilroy. Because if they're painting some flower that doesn't grow here in Gilroy, you know, do we say no to it? You know, I think what we want is something that's gonna be very appropriate. We don't want to see a political statement. We don't want to see anything that's gonna anger people. So what phrasing can we use that would capture just...
Would like family-friendly be a better one?
Well, that could offend me, because I don't have a family. You know, we can't say master bedroom anymore. We have to say primary.
Well, again, Carol, I mean, I also look at, I agree with what's been said, but part of what we're trying to promote is, you know, again, without the word Gilroy, right? I mean, if it's flowers, you know, I don't know, you incorporate garlic in, I don't know, just the connection from...
Something that's tasteful and not disrespectful to the community.
Right.
Will be tasteful and not disrespectful to the community.
Maybe we do what Susan said, decorative artwork that represents Gilroy in a tasteful manner. Just reword it.
No, that's still the same.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, being that the plywood is on buildings that people own, I doubt they want to put anything obscene on there. And if they do, the public would definitely let you know they don't like it.
Exactly.
Which would provoke a response by the city council, and then you'd have to take action to address it at that time, so.
Should we just leave it as is then?
Is there an issue in adding the word that would not be disrespectful or something, you know, to it?
I mean, that's fine.
It's up to you, as a committee.
Yeah.
Decorative artwork.
We want to take...
Maybe just if appropriate?
And then...
Appropriate, maybe.
That's tasteful. Appropriate, we're able to take Gilroy out and say that...
Decorative artwork will be tasteful and appropriate? Or just say decorative artwork will be appropriate in manner?
We don't have to say that represents Gilroy, that it's disrespectful, you know.
Decor, will be, what do you think? Group, Victoria?
I did a quick Google search, and City of San Jose has, it has recommended that mural proposals not include designs that would be considered inappropriate and/or indecent by community standards or contain political, religious, gang, or...
That's murals. That wasn't in any of the ordinances.
That's murals.
Right.
Yeah, but we could, we could use a little bit...
That's totally applicable.
Carol, there's a subcommittee that did the research in other communities. They said they were silent on this?
Well, because this is just plywood for 90 days.
Okay, so it's a rule?
Different from murals.
It's an apples comparison.
Right, right. It's not an apples comparison. Because it was Jeannie, Dave, and I that were on the committee.
Okay.
That did it. So we're just, we're hung up, but...
Well, she had, when she went for the mural, we do that. I mean, no one had specific murals in their plywood ordinances that we had reviewed or that.
It was all temporary, you know, so...
Right. But something like that, then plug it in, and then we resubmit. Because we can't get even in the, on the, on the docket till next year.
Right. Okay. All right. So we will play around with that last sentence.
And then have Victoria send that, what she pulled up.
Yeah. Victoria, would you send that over to me, please? And then we will adopt. I don't think we have to get as wordy as that part.
No, we can take from it.
But yeah, we can take some of it. Okay. If we take from it, and then we will, we'll come back. Jimmy, we probably went beyond the first weekend in January, right?
Don't have to be.
Okay, let's, let's shoot for the second meeting in January, and that gives us time to come back with that last sentence to all of you to see how you like it. Okay? All right. Thank you. Beautification, Fred?
Yeah. Okay. Well, as we shared last time, so I'm just gonna go down the list of our recommendations. Lighting, obviously, continue to replace the bulbs on downtown. If that's partnering with the GDBA, making sure that those lights continue to look the way they're looking. We want to make sure that's consistent, and it's not where, you know, it goes for months without replacement.
Fred, I'm gonna interrupt you just for a second. Is this any different from what you went over with us the other day?
It's the same.
Same one?
Yeah, it's the same, yeah. So then, the other thing we talked about is...
Well, wait, 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 wait. Did you send that out to everyone?
I thought I did.
Okay. So everyone, did all of you get a chance to read it?
No, I think we just got them. I didn't see it.
Oh, all right.
Yeah. And I think that's on all the things. We only got our own.
Got, okay.
Oh, all right. Then just go real quick.
Yeah, I'll send it. And then the other thing we talked about is looking into possibly two arches on downtown, kind of welcome Gilroy type of, you know, arch, welcome to downtown. The other thing we talked about was sidewalk. Set up a fund with the city, GDBA, whomever it may be, to power wash sidewalks monthly. Because again, right now, I think we're doing it once or twice a year. Also talked about replacing the bushes, weeds, and dirt next to the sidewalks, and replace with either stones or other similar materials or type of plants or, that will help beautify that area and keep the rats and cockroaches away. The pop-up park, look at overhead lighting strings, add some interactive artwork, add a stage for free community events, and then a QR code that showcases all our different downtown businesses. Gourmet Alley, I know that's kind of moving forward, but publish a timeline on the city website with rendering and drawing, notify businesses affected in advance of construction. Facade improvement, outdoor dining, promote and market the facade improvement and permit abatement program on our website. Do public outreach to downtown businesses about these programs, so the businesses can use this to improve their facades or fund outdoor dining. Advertisement budget, promoting downtown as Gilroy has more than just garlic, and promote the downtown businesses in various offerings available. And then finally, explore partnerships, sponsorships with the Sharks, Visit Gilroy, and our local wineries.
So I have a, or a question. I don't know if it's appropriate for this, but I did a couple years back to take advantage of the facade improvement program, which was amazing. It would be nice, I don't know if this idea is appropriate for this committee, it would be nice if coinciding with the gourmet alley project, that the downtown facade improvement program sort of expand or include a downtown patio improvement program. So in other words, what I have access to on the front?
Right.
I now have access to on the back.
And I asked Bryce about that, and that would be nice, because I went down back of where the floral shop in Princess Boutique, that used to be on the corner of Fifth and Gourmet Alley. And he said that, that time, that did not apply, because it was only to the front of the building.
Who made that stipulation? Was it the city, or was it, did it come down through special grant money that had special wording?
Yeah, I mean, it was just called from the very beginning, the downtown facade program, so.
Could that be something that we asked for a change?
Yeah.
Is it now, is that the prevailing wage issue, where people aren't taking advantage of it, because it's, you have to pay prevailing? Because that changed from when, from when you did it, when we did it, right, in 20...
I didn't look, I haven't reapplied. So when I applied, I didn't compare and contrast the language from then to now.
Because I think someone mentioned that it was really difficult to do now, because it has to be prevailing wage.
Right.
So I have, I have a question. So, and I think maybe it's because I did it this way. My husband and I own a building, and we did the work ourselves as owner builders, like literally did the work ourselves, that I put out for. Aside from buying the shingle, which I bought from overseas in one day, it was included in that, and then I installed it with its brackets.
Is yours not a historic building?
It is.
Because we ran into some issues with the exact type of Italian tile that's on the roof. So it, and it hasn't been, Gilroy's been very accommodating.
I was just being transparent.
No, it's good.
Is there a, is there a saying for that, where you can do it if you're an art dealer and you don't have to?
I don't know. It's easy to find out.
Jane?
Carol, Fred, these, a number of those components you just ran would, could be a part of a P-Bid.
Right.
So, terms of this analysis of P-Bid, I know the chamber board's getting presentations around the P-Bid. So as that's in progress, the timing on the beautification, is there a conversation about that?
On the timing aspect of things?
Because if P-Bid looks forward, that addresses many of the things you just listed.
Right. As you know, you know more than anyone. I mean, things move slow, right? And, you know, for example, I mean, you look at, I'm just gonna use, use the, the arches, right? I mean, that's a discussion we had, six, seven...
We had that in wake finding in 2012.
Right. Right. So, yeah, it's something that we talked about way back then, and, I mean, we're, we're in the same spot today as we were, you know. So for me, I think, obviously for us is, let's get things in place and move them along. And if it's, again, if it's, were you saying, maybe that falls in line with the P-Bid, then, then I think that's where we...
I'm just trying to lessen the workload from council and sort of things you're evaluating.
Yeah.
And P-Bid is that umbrella organization that can pull that off.
Well, then what's the timeline? You said you'd meet tonight?
Well, the chamber's getting a presentation from our city administrator tonight about P-Bid. As you saw, didn't you saw the letters, there's, this is talking about not forming until 2026, possibly? I think that was the date. So it's up tomorrow.
Right.
But maybe that could be accelerated. There's an organization that took the lead on it as well. Still wonder what, is it Gilroy doing? We're gonna P-Bid launch. We've got to pay a launch in nine months.
Yeah.
Because you have a leader organization.
Right.
So it depends on what property owners want to do. I'm just saying, there could or could possibly be some ideas there that we could get, and I'm just looking at the workload for council, staff, and how you're gonna pull all this off in reality check.
Carol, so what, Jane, if you don't mind, what if you and the subcommittee, we sit down and go through that and talk about that?
Absolutely.
Because I, I think you're right. I mean, I think we could possibly, right. But again, we want to see what fits and what doesn't.
All right, that'd be good. So then, I see your subcommittee spending a couple more months, three to four months on this, and then coming back with...
Yeah. And I, I'm sorry, I'm speaking for, for myself. Yeah, but I think it's important enough, right? Because...
I think it's really important, yes.
Right. Because you look at everything that we listed here, and all that plays a role in our downtown, right? I'm speaking, as my council member, I don't want our downtown just to look plain. I want it to look vibrant, where people are coming, right? And if that means changing...
Pun intended.
Pun intended. I don't want to look plain Jane, right? But I'm just saying, there's things that we can do to continue to improve our downtown. I mean, again, I like the direction that we're in, going, but there's so much more that we can do. So, yeah, I mean...
And you'd say the 26, 2026.
2026, and I'm doing it off the top of my head. I don't have my board back with me. The P-Bid would actually launch. But that's partially because city staff is leaving it right now.
That's the same as, as this one?
Property visitor improvement district, whatever that is.
Yeah.
I don't know what that is, Jamie.
That was the P-Bid that, when Bryce was writing, and then originally, we were told it was end of 2025, depending on when, if the money, when it runs out. I didn't know it was end of 2026.
Like I said, it's late 25, another 26. These things, when you watch them, you don't, you don't have the money immediately. It's a timeline. And there's a lot of detail that I'm going to share with you, having gotten with P-Bid, but it's...
More than you wanted to know.
We'll have to share with you. I just don't have the top of my mind.
Carol, if you don't mind, yeah, no, and I think let's, it's, obviously, it's up to the subcommittee members. I'm willing to meet, because I think it's important enough. But, and then we can identify where those things fall in, because, but then those other items, such as, again, the pop-up park, for example. What we have now is not what I intended envision. It's getting there, but there's so much more that we can do, right? So those discussions of what, you know, what we want to see happen, we can make it happen now. The bigger, larger items, obviously, then that's where we come.
And also, you know, the P-Bid was, was a good idea. But when you come back to council, because this is not gonna be, Fred's subcommittee, this is not gonna be an ordinance.
Right.
These are items that you would like to see in the future.
Right.
Come back with the funding sources.
Yeah.
Because I don't think we should all be on the backs of, of the business and building owners. So where would some of this stuff come from? Maybe we could, I mean, realistically, could your committee come back, report in January, or February, February maybe, and then do a presentation to council in March of what you would like to see for downtown, and where the funding's gonna come from?
I think February.
Yeah, I'm available to meet whenever you want.
All right. We'll come back in February.
Okay.
Yeah. And I guess this is a question, Carol, thank you for bringing that up, because I know that the three of us have really looked into different cities and the source of fundings, obviously, right?
Right.
I mean, the last thing we want to do is ever take anything back to the taxpayers, right? I mean, that's not. But, and again, I think we're gonna have to be creative, because, and Jimmy, correct me if I'm wrong, some of this stuff we can look at, and I understand you pull from one, add to one, you pull from another. I understand all that. But some of this funding, we can possibly look at the general fund, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
And then I know the focus is downtown, because that's our committee. How do we at some point put in there about our entrances?
Right.
Into Gilroy?
Right.
Especially with the sports park, with the sharks. I don't know if anybody goes I don't know if anybody goes down there, I mean, I grew up on that side of town, my parents live out there. It's a hot mess, and I know we're dealing with, and that is not the city limits, that is on that side of the road, it's county, and you're also dealing with the state on the highway. So I don't know how do we address the county? Now, on the other side of the freeway, you go underneath over by the trucks, that is in the city limits.
Right.
It's only on this other side, it's not. I don't know how do we address the county or the state to, you know, and I'm sure that's going to have to be all rearranged at some point, if there's going to be a stoplight there or down the road, but I don't know how do we get in front of it or get a discussion on the beautification of that area because it's, it's a church that's coming into Gilroy.
Well, we are to your committee, and maybe once we address the issues that immediately affect downtown, then a subcommittee could take that on because once we get our downtown, you know, in order, all of the gateways do affect downtown. It, it's a first impression. So let's see what happens, you know, we've got the rest of 24 to deal with, and somebody might want to take that on and say, let's bring suggestions if it means lobbying the county and state a lot, and I shouldn't even say the word lobbying, it's more like hounding them to get it done.
It's not really hounding. Today, what we can do is build relationships at the highest level, so that would mean our city council, our mayor, so those relationships need to start happening at the county and state level, so that way we can collaborate instead of hound.
Well, I guess I said hound because valley water continually ignores their property, and we've been trying to build relationships with them, and it's just kind of falling on deaf ears. I think we have to step over into more of it. This is our city, and we don't want our city looking like this. It, it has to be a little firmer, because I think some of these people who live far away, they don't see it, and so out of sight, out of mind, they don't have to deal with it. And I, I understand, people listen a little bit more when you're collaborating, but believe me, we were, we've already been collaborating and.
And we call ourselves trying to get weeds.
We're not getting anywhere.
Defense repair, sometimes you get, most of the time.
Yes.
You're lucky if you did a phone call back, so.
Exactly, so now we have to be that little thorn to say, we're proud of our city, we want it to look really nice, and this is what, if you're going to be a partner in our city, this is what you have to do to be a partner here.
And what are your needs? And what can I do for you? And what is going on that's preventing you from being active in the sense of helping us? So I'm just saying.
No, 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 I know.
Usually their response is that they're understaffed.
Uh huh.
And.
They don't have time.
So many other projects and the money, you know, is usually.
That's everywhere, in our own city council, yeah, you guys are very overworked, so.
Carol's not.
I'm not, no.
All right, so, yeah, we'll do that, Jane will reach out to you, we'll set up a meeting, and then we'll identify those, but then the others we'll bring back that can be decided as a group here. Yeah, is that okay?
All right. Our next one that will be coming back as a report also to the council. Now, Jimmy, before we get involved with the noise ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't staff looking at a noise ordinance?
Yeah, it's part of the zoning code, zoning code update that we bring to council at some point.
Okay, so has the subcommittee talked, talked to the appropriate staff person maybe?
Yes, I think when the mayor was talking about this project as well, it was more specific to downtown and certain business hours, so like noise after 10:00 PM or what have you.
So that will be the direct focus, just the downtown?
We would most likely focus that in the zoning code ordinance, it would be the citywide ordinance for noise, but you could have more specific requirements for downtown and other areas.
So Tony, did you get a chance to go to Morgan Hill, and what did you find out?
So we, I did not, because somebody came up with the case, but I did get your notes, is that the, yeah, you can go that way. I did get your notes from Mayor Blankley because I had to leave early last time, and so I updated this sheet with your notes, which speaks to the fact that we're not addressing, you'll see in the first couple of notes, we're not changing anything because we're not addressing the general ordinance, but what's really changed is page two, you're going to see the lineups, item two, so we're going to totally, according to your notes from the last meeting, you want to get rid of the suggested change and keep current the language, that's already in there. Item three in construction, there was a consensus to keep that current language. Item four, keep the current language. Item five, the suggestion was to change the word music to noise, so we did that. Item B, there doesn't seem to be a modification from your last suggestion at the last meeting. Item six, keep the current language. Item seven, exemptions, keep the current language. And item eight, which is the very specific downtown language, you had said, you can't really see this, but to cross out fourth and to expand it to third, so that's in here. What else did you say? Okay, the other one that you had suggested was to raise the decibel level and change the 10:30 timeframe to midnight, which is the last, I think it's the last bullet? Yeah, the last bullet. The noise level exceeds 85 decibels from 8:00 AM to 10:30 PM, 65 from 10:30 to 2:00 AM, and 52 AM to 8:00 AM. So there didn't seem to be a consensus in raising that decibel level and changing from 10:30 to midnight. The justification for not making it more lax is that the restaurants generally close at 10:00, meaning only bars and clubs open. So mayor and I talked, and because there wasn't an absolute agreement that that shouldn't necessarily be a suggested change, because there was still some cohort that said, let's make it more lax, another cohort that's not comfortable with making it more lax, so that is not something that we're comfortable moving forward with. So those were easy modifications based on your last suggestion. Those are the easy ones.
All right. So then you're saying leave it from 8:00 to 10:30?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, at 85. Someone had a suggestion and, or a question, and I have to agree with him, what does 85 sound like?
I don't have a tool, and I've never measured it, but it's at, it's outside, so it's not, you're not in the party, you're out.
Outside.
Outside at a restaurant adjacent to it, so it's taken at the property line using that specific tool to measure. It's just a common threshold in all other cities, it's not like, I think, what was the suggestion, a hundred some, or someone wanted to?
I don't remember.
Does anyone remember what they wanted to raise it to from 85? Anyway, that's, nowhere did we find any, any data pointing to raising it to a hundred some. Like, I have a strong suspicion that when you take your meter and you go to the property line, like, that's, 85 is pretty loud, like, it's pretty tolerant of what's going on inside. But I, again, I am not the meter person, like, I'm not an expert in using that sort of meter to measure.
Okay, so in other words, let's say it's a hot summer night, Tempo has all their doors open, and at 10:30, are they going to have to close their doors because is the sound going to be louder than 85? See, I don't know what 85 is, you know, and is it just so unbearable that, you know, your walls are thumping and every, I don't know.
And you could be silent.
Could you give an example, if you'd like, huh?
Yes, yes, please.
Food blender, Hoover vacuum cleaner, background traffic, or a room of people applauding and cheering.
That's 85?
That's in-your-face 85, like, that's the blender right next to you, yeah.
Wow.
Huh.
So if you want to sort of extract that, if there's a consensus built on raising it, but.
Well, let's see, what's a hundred? Do you have that?
I'd get close to it, airplane.
That's fine, layers, no.
Yeah.
Yes, it's like astronomical.
Right, okay, because I was just wondering, since someone suggested a hundred, I was like, okay, well, so what is that example? And is that pretty standard in other committees?
Yes. It becomes a situation also, I have to look at the health standard, because the decibel level, reoccurring noise at a certain decibel level is going to ruin your sensual hearing. So even if you did lift it to a point where you're like, oh, that's a full band, I mean, imagine you're sitting at a concert next to a sneaker, what does that feel like on your eardrum? Right? So it's a health standard, too. So you guys can discuss that a little bit more if you want to, or if you want, if the council wants to.
So say 93 is hearing damage, that's the same difference.
Ninety?
Eighty-five, so 85 to 93.
Okay. What do you think, committee?
I like that 85 to 93.
Right now, it says 85.
Mm-hmm, 85.
They should say to, the max, I mean, I don't know, we, we want to put a range, it's either, that would be the max in this.
Maybe max, yeah. Would that be okay? Saying the max would be 85 from this time to this time?
Anything, any, I'm saying anything over 85 or anything over 93.
That's what I.
93 or higher, as opposed to in this, 85 to 93.
So it says noise level, the noise level exceeds 85 dB from 8:00 AM to 10:30 PM.
So it's either exceeds, we need that or exceeds, you know.
So if they hit 90, they hit 90 at, at 10 o'clock at night, then it's a problem. But 90 is a problem in and of itself.
Yeah. Well, I think we had a question last time about the 65 from 10:30 to 2:00 AM, too, because of the, because we do have a significant amount of clubs and things in downtown.
And I think that's why we.
I think that was like a question.
And that's why we moved it to 11, right?
I don't remember what 65 is.
So they moved it to midnight?
Yeah. Well, I think we were thinking, some of us were suggesting moving it to midnight.
Yeah, that's what it says in the note.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
But what is?
What is 65?
We also have residences, so that's the other, this huge problem is that we have a bunch of people with residents, and I do get that they rent it with the assumption of what they're renting next to or owning, but we do have residences next to that. So you, so the suggestion is to change 8 to midnight?
Committee?
To the 85 decibel.
Committee, what do you think?
I would say so, because again, and again, I'm trying to understand, and let's use Topos or Temple, I mean, if they're having a band there at 11, 12 o'clock, then all of a sudden, it's like, you have to cut it off because of how, how loud they are, you know? I could, I have concerns about that because obviously these businesses, they thrive off of that, right? And I, but I also respect that residents, we have residents, but going back to your first point, they knew coming in that this is part of our downtown, right? So it's not an excuse, but they knew that that's what they're getting themselves into. I have concerns if we're going to tell folks, touch your music off at 10, 11, 12 o'clock, you know, then we're, we're telling the businesses, you know, too bad, right?
Why does it have to be so loud outside?
Right, as long as, if.
As long as they keep it inside.
Right, as long as they keep it.
Or closed.
Yeah, right, so, that's my take on it.
What about a compromise between midnight and 10:30?
So don't exceed the deci, I mean, don't, we're not looking at raising it from 85 to 90 or whatever you're looking at, but we're looking at the time slot, so we are seeing it's pretty loud already. Right? So, so 8 to midnight is the, is the compromise?
What do you think?
I'd say you do midnight, because I'm, you might chase.
Midnight, Matt, what do you think?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, that's, that seems fair, but I'm also wondering how it's going to be enforced and who's going to be enforcing this kind of stuff if they're standing outside of the thing.
It's by complaint only, and they have to, they put their app and do it on their phone or whatever, but they'll have to.
It's safe to run into.
By all of these appliances, who's going to enforce?
So then these suggestions, Jimmy, would be incorporated in with the actual city noise ordinance, as downtown would be a separate one? So these would be the recommendations that, that they would give.
I would say midnight.
What did you see with the other five city ordinances?
Exactly like this, I mean, I had the grid layout, yeah, so it was very similar to this, if they spoke about a downtown district at all.
That was my question, Tony, was this citywide that you're looking at?
A lot of these were, Morgan Hill, Las Gatos, the grid that I gave you was like a cross-section, yeah, smaller cities. So if the compromise is taking it to midnight, do you also see an issue with 65 from midnight to 2? What time does Capos close?
1:30, 2 o'clock?
Yeah, I think they shut off at, I think light last call is the normal.
But they're, they're not every weekend, every, they're.
They're typically Friday, Saturday, you know, they're not every day.
And they're not every Friday.
Right, that's true.
Like, the district is.
The district is, right.
And then, I don't know if the park and their union is very loud, though.
No, I mean, besides the people in there, because they kind of stare outside.
Has the city been getting any complaints? Okay, so I think parts of, yeah.
I think these ordinance tend to be more for the people who go way out of control and don't listen to the input from the community. That's when you really get to the enforcement issue, a one-time thing for an hour is bound you like to get the.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, again, I'm going to go back to my concerns, my only concern is I don't want to empower individuals who don't like the fact of where they live, they hear music, and then, right? And then now they're, now they're punishing businesses because they don't like the music that's going on, whatever it may be, and then you get four complaints for Station 55 because they don't like the karaoke, whatever it may be. Now, we're coming down on these folks because of certain, you know, residents, and so I don't think it's fair. I, I'm trying to make it fair for both, but I also want to make sure that we don't put our businesses in a position where they're going to suffer from this. That's my take on it.
But if the karaoke is indoors, would that noise be resonating outside? You know, if they close their doors at a certain time? If they were doing it outside, then I could see that a problem.
It does, I mean, it does, it is pretty loud, but it's not, I don't think it's, I don't think it's 85 decibels when you're outside, I don't think, even when they're, because I don't think I've ever seen Station 55's door closed.
Uh huh.
So.
So imagine you're walking this, you're eating, you're eating in the patio restaurant, two doors down, and Capos is having a full band, right? Let's think about 85.
Sure.
If it hits 85 and you're outside and the meter's right next to you and it's 85, imagine how debilitating it is for the person inside dancing. Like, that's, they're suffering if you're experiencing 85.
They chose to come to the function.
No, I'm just saying, like, she's, she's.
Go to a country.
They're physically suffering, but they may not be suffering, they may not realize they're actually suffering.
I realize they're suffering, but, but now it's too good.
To me, that's not our.
No, I, what I'm trying to say is complete health standard, like, the impact on your eardrum.
Right, I mean, we've all been to concerts.
We've all lost some of it here over the years.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I think our noise ordinance really has to focus on the outside area, uh, you know, of neighbors, yeah.
When it's a residence complaining who lives above, like, so I think there's residents above Tempo, or are there only businesses? I can't remember, are there residents?
Others.
Well, not only if you have that whole structure.
That's right.
Right next to them, from the corner, heritage and above.
Well, the owners, I think of Capos, they're upstairs, don't they?
Right, right.
So if they're above and they're complaining, they're technically within the property line, so they, the ordinance or the enforcement people just come in, they measure outside of it, and then they're like, you're, they're within their limits, and then they just piece out. So it doesn't really matter if it's above, but they don't measure it above in the residential. Is that basically how it works?
Has anybody looked up the amount of complaints that have been received for noise?
Jimmy, did you say there were?
So they have, yeah?
No, so it's kind of a recalling.
I know the mayor did mention last time that there, that she, I think she mentioned that there have been complaints or there's been issues, so I don't know if maybe they're not formally coming in or something, or she's experiencing, but she did say something in her last meeting.
Well, I, I've heard from a business, and I'll, Station 55 where people are complaining because of the music, which isn't loud compared to some of the other places. It's just, again, you have residents right there, so they hear the music and it's 10 o'clock, and they want them to turn it off, which is unfair to the business, right? So those are the complaints that I've been hearing from, from that restaurant is.
So their music is indoors or outdoors?
Indoors.
Indoors, okay.
But it's on the second, they do it on the second story, too.
Right, so, but which is inside their building, but again, if I'm a, right, so, again, I'm going back to being fair for both sides, and if this is my business and I'm inside with music, I should have every right to play until midnight, whatever it may be, so.
Yeah, Kelly?
So thank you for the opportunity to speak, but just, you know, to Tony's point, it seems like she's done the research and it's, it's pretty standard practice. The other thing that no one has mentioned is the employees of these establishments that, you know, don't have the option to leave. You know, there may be a reason for that 85 decibel for health standards for employees that are required to be there when music is being played and things like that, so just something to also.
Can I ask, sorry, I don't understand what you mean, they don't have the option to leave? These are employees who, you know, I chose to work here knowing what we're doing, so, I mean, are you saying that they don't have the choice to leave when the music is playing?
Right.
Well, it's their choice though to be there, that's how I look at it.
There's a, certainly there's a choice whether you want to work there or not, given a perfect world, but then when you're looking for employment so that you can support a family and, and pay rent. Oftentimes, especially in the United, you don't have the luxury of picking and choosing where you, you can work.
See, maybe I'm off base here, but I thought this noise ordinance was applying more to the outside, right? And so I don't think we really should focus in on the inside of what goes on in the restaurants.
So we have this tier, are most of the noise ordinance, ordinances tiered like this with the timeframe, like, so you have? What if we do something instead of the compromise going all the way till midnight with 85? What if it just goes to like 70 or something, not quite 65, which is lower, but maybe it just goes to 70 from 10:30 to 2:00 A.M. And that way, there is some relief for the residents, you know, but, but it still allows the businesses to have their music at a decent level. But it's just a more, or maybe 72 or something.
She's talking about a step-down approach, which is totally reasonable.
Yeah, it's a tiered color, it's not the right work.
No, no, I mean, but it's, it makes sense if you're, if you're balancing the interests of the residents and the business owner.
Yes, it's, it's up to you. I'm gonna cut this off in, in a minute.
Okay.
Because I wanna talk about the last one.
Yes, I need to talk about the last one. So are we okay with the step-down approach? And so do we wanna go 85, 8 to 12 midnight? And 75? Or 85, 8 to 10:30, and then 75, 10:30 to 2? Or do we wanna go 85, 8 to midnight, and 75, midnight to 2?
I'll let that last one, because 85, going back to 85, I'm looking at, the sound of a band can be around 85, right? So if you have a band in Capos or Tempo or wherever, then that's kind of the sound that you get from that, right? So I would go with the last one, 85 from 8 to 12, and then, sorry, Tony, I didn't get the last part of that.
I said 80, one of the options, 85, 8 to 12, 75, 12 to 2.
Yeah, I would go, that, that would be my choice.
Yeah, Jeff?
So let me get this straight, you guys are making decisions on decibel levels and picking numbers, and you don't even know what those decibel levels actually are?
So they, no, it has been, I don't know if you got the grid from last time. So I am not a subject matter expert in measuring and using the tools. But at least I collected data from Los Gatos, Morgan Hill, and Mel Peters, and Sunnyvale, and so those, and Hollister. So those numbers weren't necessarily extracted from thin air, it's a reasonable standard according to other cities. I haven't, I don't have the time, but I wasn't charged with the research of the, how to use the meter and, and the verification as a meter. And going down that rabbit hole, I guess I can, as opposed to.
No, I think you were only charged with finding out what other cities have.
Yes, and that's what I did, and this was sort of a reasonable approach threshold. I can go down the relevant further as to why they did what they did if they used a scientific method.
And that's why we're asking, Jimmy, how, would like to tell us kind of what the, what that sounds like, and so.
Yeah, it is a scientific method, because you're, you're essentially gonna find somebody. I'll give you the example, we had some complaints out at Eagle Ridge with the leak blowers in the morning. So we actually did have code enforcement go out there at 7 o'clock in the morning with a technical meter, not an iPhone and not an Android or whatever. And they found that they weren't violating the, the noise levels, so that ended it right there. It's, it's not real complicated.
Right.
No, it isn't. Well, Tony gave you a suggestion, let's do a thumbs up, Tony, if you don't mind, for you, one more time.
So that, this is clear, is the noise level exceeds 85 dB from 8:00 A.M. to 12 midnight, and 75 midnight to 2:00 A.M. And then you go step it down further, 50, 2:00 A.M. to 8:00 A.M.
And that's based on other cities.
That are specific to, yes, to downtown, that have something relevant to downtown.
I like that.
That's option A, right, and then option B is the step down between 10:30 and 12:00?
Yes.
Okay, so we're basically talking about time right now, so 8 to midnight. Okay, thumbs up, thumbs down?
That's the first one.
That's the first one, and the second one would be, your other choice would be 10:30 to midnight, if you step down. Or 10:30 to 2.
At 75, I think we have, or?
What you're basically deciding on is whether you want the sound to be reduced to 10:30 or midnight. That, those are your two choices.
And the step down is gonna be 85 to 75.
Right.
I think Abshay had the majority.
I think Abshay had the majority.
Okay, so Tony, you guys there?
Good job, Tony.
Okay, we have seven minutes to talk about, code enforcement, subcommittee.
Wait a minute, I just have one thing to throw out, because it's really pressing right now. Someone brought, so the one-way thing, I threw out there, you guys can totally just, you know, I know that it wasn't something you wanted to explore. Speaking to a former supervisor in San Benito County when they were using the revitalization package put together one way into Hollister. It was to address noise and to address speed. And so they decided to go from 20, Highway 25, going southbound and go into the city to step it down, which really made a significant impact with noise and speed. Taking it from a highway down to a San Benito Street downtown. So from their perspective, it made the world of difference. If we were gonna analogize that and take this into a one-way, we have Monterey Highway, we have the freeway coming in, which is high-speed traffic. We could explore going from high-speed traffic, stepping it down. That's, that's the least of my concern right now, my biggest concern are big rigs. Because someone brought it to my attention and I really wasn't paying attention until I became part of this committee. And someone brought it to my attention that there's a big rig problem downtown and that.
Going north or south?
Either both ways.
Both, majority, okay, so once this person brought it to my attention, I started to sit outside and actually take pictures. And as I was crossing the street, I was taking pictures, as I was at the front desk, I was taking pictures. It has become problematic that huge big rigs are coming down Monterey. That's deteriorating the integrity of our roads, and Caltrans doesn't necessarily fix downtown roads, is that the case? And also noise, and so these are huge big rigs. And the fact that there's a CHP scale on 101 in Gilroy is alarming to me. So the question then becomes, do we have signage deterring this, and are there penalties? And if we do, how do we improve the signage and improve the penalty and talk to the Teamsters to get them to stop doing it? So that's, I'm sorry, it was like a huge issue for me, but once I saw it happening and how often I was taking pictures.
And what type of big rigs are they?
Oh, they're.
Is that quite the same, between delivery trucks and others, or is it strictly?
It's a diverse group.
I think that might be a good subcommittee. You know, yeah, after the first of the year, that takes it on me, you might wanna even head it, because this is what I'm thinking, and, please throw out all these ideas to me, correct me if I'm wrong. But the city council members took the chairs on the subcommittees this first time around. I am perfectly okay with having one of you take the chair on, on some of the subcommittees. It doesn't always have to be the council person. Thoughts? Are you, I mean, if you're not comfortable doing that, that's fine, but, I mean, if some of you are, are comfortable in taking a chair of a subcommittee, I'm fine with that too.
Okay, I think, let's, I think we should have a discussion, yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing with you, but I think.
And we could discuss it in January. Now, one, one subcommittee has never gotten on the ground, off the ground, and it's been since June, and they were, it was supposed, they were supposed to be reporting today. Code enforcement is extremely important, because without, we can do all the ordinances that we want, but if we don't have code enforcement in place, it's not going to happen. So with this committee's permission, we have our three new members. I am thinking, actually Frank would be one of them too, a, a fourth. I would say to turn code enforcement over to Susan, Savannah, Jane, Frank, one of you choose to be a chair of that subcommittee. And what we're basically, I think what that committee's gonna be basically looking at is the push to say, if we have ordinances on the books, like we found out with plywood removal, there was an ordinance never being enforced. Suggestions that are going to be going to council to say, enforce what we already have on the books.
Carol, yeah, I, I would love for that to happen, I just, I just don't want there to be any backlash from the entire council. Because I think, Jimmy, when we set this up, originally, the way it was structured was council members. Now, we might have to go back and get that changed so we can allow that to happen, because I would.
Wait, I don't understand what you're talking about.
So when we set up this committee, remember, it was decided at council that all, each council member that was on it would lead a committee, right? That was part of the, that was part of the description.
For the two years, see, I never got that impression, I got it the first time.
Yeah, I don't know, Jimmy, that's, right. Okay.
We might have to go back and.
If not, let's do it, I'm all in favor of it. But can I go back to Tony's question real quick? Jimmy, on Ren Avenue, don't we have signage for big rigs not, that are prohibited to go down there? Is it Ren?
Well, we used to, remember when we had a curb joke in the streets back in the day? And you couldn't get the big rigs downtown, but also it, it is the old Monterey Highway for that. Also, you can't come, I know, on the Santa Teresa, and that's why you see the big rigs come all the way down First Street. You know, going out, even out to the pass. The only reason I know that is because my husband's business is out there, and they're not allowed to come massive in Santa Teresa to his business. And so here, it forces them to come through up to town at least and turning on First Street. So some of these other may be detouring these trucks because they can't go that hard of a way. So then they're coming, they're just continuing on, on Monterey. So, I mean, it, it's gonna be a challenge, I don't think, it'd shock me if the Teamsters would do anything, you know.
Well, if we put a sign up on each, on arch on each side of downtown, that'll stop them.
And then I don't know if something could ever put into Waze or into different MapQuest or different things, that this is not a truck.
That is a new updated email list and phone number list for all of you.
Do you want me to pass out this vacancy ordinance now or to keep it?
You know what, pass it out, and then we will start that in January. We're going to the next date, I put at the end of it, is our second Tuesday in January. And we will go over the vacancy ordinance, and Dylan will be back by then. And then, if code enforcement, if the four of you have, or three of you just have a couple of minutes, can we meet outside and talk real briefly to get you guys going?
Who handled the code enforcement for the, the, you know, when they were bimbing on the streets? Because they did, whoever's handling that did a great job.
Staff, right, Jimmy, you guys did it.
Yeah, we did a great job.
No, it's like, maybe it's the weather, they're not out there anymore, who knows?
Yeah, that could be, yeah.
No, it's just staff to do a good job.
Okay. Thank you very much, you guys, have a happy holiday season, because I won't see some of you until January, okay, bye-bye. Meeting adjourned.